All right, welcome everyone to this Delray Oaks Regular City Council Meeting. Can I have a rule call, please?
Preston.
President.
Here.
Here.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the God which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is public comment. General public comment must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. There'll be a time limit of no more than three minutes per speaker. Public comment is now open. Okay, seeing none. Move on to consent agenda. Are there any items from the council that you would like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Take it out to the public. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull? Okay, also seeing none. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Old business, we have none, so we'll move on to new business. And the first item is consideration of a letter of support for the State Water Resources Board modification of the cease and desist order. WR 2016-0016. I'll give it to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a... Pay attention, we're on the letters, right?
Yes.
Thanks. Sorry, trying to figure out the technology. Yeah, so this is a request that we got from the Water Management District. And Mr. McCullough is here to give his spiel to you all.
Thank you. Good to see you. So, um, I think the purpose of the letter from the different jurisdictions was to say, you know, we have an opportunity in the area to try to see if we can't modify the cease and desist order. I think we've really had to change our vernacular a little bit instead it's a lifting. We're just trying to take one of the sections of the cease and desist order and try to remove that. And that's called condition two. And condition two is basically saying you can't set any new meters for construction. And you can't increase the use of an existing meter for like changing from residential to commercial or anything like that. And so that was our application to the State Water Resources Control Board. We sent that in October 21st, asking them to modify the cease and desist order so that it would lift condition two. And primarily, we're trying to do that in order to encourage some of the regional housing needs that everybody has been talking about, how are we going to do it? And plus, the opportunity for some job creation. And so it's really been a unique opportunity because we've had... The conditions that they set was that you can't trespass, you can't go over the amount of water that's legally available for the water supplier. And we haven't done that over the last four years. So we thought, okay, we've got a little track record now of not trespassing the existing limit. And then with the Pure Water Monterey Expansion Project coming online, with the additional water supply that's in the future, we think that, you know, there won't be any foreseeable threat moving into the future. So that's why we thought, okay, here's the opportunity to strike while the iron's hot. We met with the five State Water Ward members twice to kind of say, hey, here's where we are. Here's the numbers, whether you want to agree with the available water supply numbers or the demand numbers that the CPC bannered around with in August. That's not here or there. We just feel like we have an additional supply. We have ample supply now and into the future. And so that's why we went ahead and had the board put forth the resolution to put with our packet. So that's the gist of it. We're going around asking for letters of support from the jurisdictions that may have, you know, needs us all, you're going to think about allocating the water. And hopefully, we'll have enough letters of support that the water board will take this serious and say, hey, you know, maybe it is time. And what we're trying to do is have them just look at the reporting that we do on a regular basis, or Calend does on a regular basis, and not modify it a little bit and say, look, you know, here's where we are. If there's anything changing, or if we've grown way more than we thought, then they could probably come back and do some type of action if they needed to. But with just the the rules and regulations that the district has set in place, you know, people aren't going to run out and use a lot of water because why? You know, we have new technologies, the price of water, you know, there's just, the ordinances are there so that we have to stay in our lane. And I don't think we're going to go back and change any of those. I think we're here. This is where we are. And the water usage over the last three to four years or five years has shown we can do that. We can stay within our limit. Kind of believe that tourism's bounced back. Going to talk to some of the realtors. I think, you know, we've had a pretty healthy real estate market. So I think it's, you know, all the signals are kind of lining up that we're pretty much in a sustainable position. You may not be able to use as much water as you did in the past, and I don't know if that's a bad thing. You certainly can use it today. You're just going to have to pay for it. And I don't know if that's a horrible, uh, place to be because of, you know, supply and demand. So if you want to use it, it's there. And we've been within our limits. We also have some storage available now. I don't know if that's been the case. And other than like behind Los Padres Dam, but now we have the seaside groundwater basin that has additional aquifer storage and recovery water sitting there in case we need that. It's almost like almost fifty percent of a year of supply that's sitting there waiting to be tapped if we need to. So any questions you have, I'm here to answer them. And we just appreciate if there's an opportunity to send in a letter, we'd encourage that. We have, we've had eight sent in today. No, nine today. Had another one go in today, so there's nine.
Okay. Well, Mike, thank you for your presentation and also taking the time to come down here and personally provide us that information.
Okay. So if you have any questions, I'll come back up.
Yeah, you can stay right there. Um, let me go through the council. I'll start with council member Shirley first, if you have any questions or comments.
I do not have any questions. Thank you, Mike. Um, I really appreciate this. I think this is a good thing for us to pursue, not only for our city, but I think for the whole peninsula. So I would certainly support the neutral letter and, and I have maybe a few edits to it, but other than that, I think it's great.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, council member Berger.
Thank, thank you very much for coming and talking with us. We appreciate it. Uh, I read something today that Monterey Peninsula at this present time is using water at the levels that we were back in the Eisenhower administration, which is far less than what you would think with a far larger population. So education must be doing something. I think that we need to support more education on water usage and, as you said, technology. And so I think that's a good job on the peninsula for doing that. Uh, thank you for your, your support today.
Right, thank you. Council member Uli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Mike, for being here. And, and I thank you for your leadership, for really like sending or propagating this letter to all jurisdictions. And I, I fully support this and, uh, but I just have one question for you. So based on your experience, uh, how effective is this strategy in writing letters to the board? And would they really like, uh, agree with us? Or how strong or what would be the impact of that if we're the one sending? And then, and who else can send this letter? Would, uh, like a resident, a common resident, send this letter?
Sure. Um, to answer your point, do they recognize letters of support? I think the answer is yes. And just some of our other dealings with, you know, legislative bills or sending in letters of support, they do read them. And so obviously, a topic of this importance for this area that's been struggling with this for thirty years. I think, you know, it's very well known throughout the state that we've had our share of challenges. And I think, you know, they're starting to recognize that there's been projects that are working on a local scale that are now starting to make a difference. And I'll give you an example. So late in October, we gave a tour of some staff from the Department of Water Resources. And so twenty-seven individuals came down. We took them around to some of the different projects that we've done. And everybody's like, wow, that's really impressive. Well, what I was really impressed with is that most of those people had heard about the Monterey Peninsula's issues. You know, whether they've been here a lot on vacation or whatever, they knew about what we've done. And now they're starting to see these projects coming along to help solve some of these issues. So yes, letters of support do make a difference. And, and if a member of the public is watching or wants to participate, wants to send in one, be more than happy to provide them a template and give them the address that they can send it into.
Okay. And where can they find this template and where to, to send it?
So, um, they could just reach out to me at the, at the district. We didn't put a template letter in. We just kind of did a mailing or email blast to, you know, the jurisdictions, uh, select organizations that, you know, have a feel for the business community, the real estate agent, you know, those stakeholders that are usually the ones that comment. And so those are the ones that we kind of targeted.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, Vice Mayor Hallack.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. McCullough, for taking time to come and give us this presentation in addition to the, the information that we already have here. Um, no questions, uh, just our gratitude again for your, your presence here. And I will just go so far as to say that I fully support uh, the mayor's letter and to thank the mayor for his work along with the other members of the Monterey County Mayor's Association. And I as well will support, uh, consistent with the letter seems to be more so, uh, option one as it's been presented to the councils. So that is all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, as mentioned, um, I've already supported this through a letter which is very similar to the neutral level that was provided by the district through the mayor's county or the, uh, the Monterey County, County Mayor's Association, which includes all twelve mayors within the county. Like I said, it's essentially the same as the neutral letter. There's only one paragraph that, um, is different within there. But I think it expresses, uh, what needs to be done in this particular case. So, uh, I, I, I support, um, submitting a letter that's very similar to the Monterey County Mayor's Association. But first, I want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to make comment or ask questions. So I'll open it up to the public for any public comments. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for any final discussion.
I, I just, again, I just have a couple word choices that we could change just to make it sound like it's coming from a city. So, um, I, I can give that later or if you want to want me to share it now, I can. Um, so on the neutral letter, be on behalf of obviously DRO, City Council. The second to last, um, paragraph, instead of our communities, it'd be our residents, invested stakeholders. Um, and then the last sentence of that same paragraph, working to align business and housing interests for the benefit of our community is a win for all communities on the Delray, on the Monterey Peninsula. And then the last paragraph, um, the members of the Delray Oak City Council have discussed this and encourage you.
Okay.
That's it.
Any, so council member Berger.
I, I think I like the language that council member Shirley is using. It makes sense to be coming from us directly to make it seem like it's, otherwise the letter is beautiful.
Okay. Council member Uli.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I support the neutral PWN focus template. And then if we can make some modifications, just like, uh, council member Shirley, uh, mentioned, I'm okay with it too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hallack.
I would concur and I will agree with these minor edits to singularize communities to community comma residents. And also to singularize at the end of that, um, paragraph, uh, community. Just to give it a more specific to our immediate community, um, vicinity. And sure, to highlight, uh, discussion and engagement on this very important matter on the last, first line of the last paragraph is, that's agreeable as well. So, yes.
Okay, um, yeah, the only modification between the mayor's letter and the neutral letter is the fourth paragraph. It's in the neutral letter, but it's not in the mayor's letter. Are there any thoughts on whether or not to include that paragraph or leave it consistent with what's in the mayor's letter? And it talks about RENA. One of the reasons why it really doesn't apply to Delray Oaks is our RENA numbers are based on our housing. our Rena numbers are based on our housing that's out at the former Fort Ord, which we got, we get our water through, uh, Marina Coast, so they're not under the cease and desist. We do have twenty ADUs, um, but they already have meters, so the cease and desist order does not apply to them as well. So really, that paragraph is, is not essentially applicable to, to Delray Oaks. So any, any thoughts on whether we should include that fourth paragraph or not? And if you need some time to take a look at it, go ahead.
To the mayor.
Yes.
We, we could keep it as is. Like, I, I changed it to make it more like it's coming from us. But you, you're right in that, um, most of our Rena is coming from, you know, Marina Coast. So it doesn't, that CDO doesn't apply. Um, I do believe that we, we are supporting this for the entire peninsula though, right? So I feel that, um, when we say our communities, invested stakeholders are eager, eager to start, like, we're speaking for other communities, not just ours. So I, I would, I would advocate leaving it in, but maybe keeping, changing my wording to, to keep that wording if, um, so it makes it look like we're part of a larger group that's offering this.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Yeah, allow you, allow everyone to continue to, to take a look at it unless you, you have some thoughts on it. Go ahead, council member.
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, for this paragraph, um, uh, how would it be compelling if we're gonna mention the Rihanna, the, the Rihanna number? Uh, because we can probably tweak some of the wordings here. I know that we're not yet starting to fulfill a Rihanna. Maybe we can just say we're, are eager to prepare for our Rihanna numbers and blah, blah, blah. So, so kind of like that, like to twist and to make it more, um, uh, kind of like applicable to us. Yeah, that's only my point, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments? Vice Mayor Halleck.
Uh, in retrospect, uh, to your points, Mr. Mayor, um, i- i- it seems like quite moot unnecessary, so I'm fine either way. I'll remain somewhat neutral. Um, I'm fine with the omission thereof. And I think that the Monterey County Mayor's Association, uh, collectively does represent all of us regionally. And at the same time voices our individual support, or our specific city support, so.
Okay.
I could go either way on that.
Okay. Council member Berger, did you have any other additional comments?
No, I, I'm neutral as well, thank you.
Okay. So based, yes.
Sorry. We, we could keep it in and then just, um, so keep it as our communities, invested stakeholders. Um, and then the last sentence, um, working to align business and housing interests for the benefit, um, of all communities on the, on the Monterey Peninsula.
Okay. All right. Um, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I, I move to approve the neutral letter with keeping that paragraph in. Um, and then maybe just editing the last sentence of that paragraph.
I, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to, and thanks again, Mike. Really appreciate it. Um, we'll move on to the second item in new business. Uh, consider adopting a policy guiding the allocation of additional water resources. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll try to keep this fairly brief since we've talked about this before, but, uh, you'll all recall, uh, thanks to Mike and the Water Management District, uh, and more importantly, to the work of, uh, Monterey One Water. We have additional water that we can allocate for the first time in thirty-one years in our city. Uh, and, um, I, I want to say that Denise and I really fought with Dave and the Water Management District over our allocation because our initial allocation was four acre feet. Uh, but by the time we showed up with Dave, he had already given us the two acre feet we were showing up to demand. And so it took all of our thunder, but I, we got what we, what we wanted for the community. So we got six acre feet, which is, and Mike, you can check my math for me. Uh, but conservatively speaking, if, you know, for, for us, um, for us, our opportunities are ADUs and some economic development. And, uh, if we were to do ADUs, most ADUs can be done with existing water allocations and some modifications to existing fixtures. Uh, but let's say that they weren't and we needed to hand out water credits for, uh, all the ADUs in the city. Um, probably eighty to ninety, give or take, would be about what we could get with six acre feet. I've kind of comparing that to apartment complexes. And we'd probably get about eighty to ninety one-bedroom apartments with six acre feet. Does that sound about right, Mike? I'm putting you on the spot. Yeah. Yeah. It's probably, without lifting the CDO, it's probably more than we can, uh, accomplish in the existing footprint of the city because as we said, the Fort Ord property is in Marina Coast water. And so the six acre feet is just for everything outside of that, outside of that area. Uh, so to give me some direction and give the staff, uh, some, some guidance on how you all want to see this water be used. Um, we tried to come up with as many, uh, opportunities as we could identify for use of this water. Um, and then we just kind of picked numbers on amounts that we think we could possibly use for those categories. It's not very scientific. We just kind of sat around and talked about it and came up with it. Uh, we presented this to the planning commission. They didn't have any changes or any comments really about what we're proposing. Uh, they thought it all sounded good. Uh, but just go over it with you really quickly. So as I mentioned, accessory dwelling units, that's our best opportunity for new housing. Um, and we do have already three requests. Can't Karen? We have three people waiting for, yeah. So, so there is some demand out there for, uh, additional ADUs with some additional water. Um, and that'll go a long way in helping as little as we can with some, you know, providing additional housing. Uh, so we picked three acre feet, basically half of, of the allocation for that. Um, it's unlikely that we will meet that three acre feet with just ADUs. Uh, unless the CDO, well, actually the CDO won't affect ADUs, but anyway. Um, we're gonna try to get as far as we can because I have Mike's word that if we use the six acre feet, he's gonna find more water for us. So, right? Sorry, you showed up, aren't you? Uh, so the second one, and these aren't necessary, necessarily in priority order. I don't really think that there is a priority because, uh, a reason for us to prioritize because I think we have adequate water to accomplish anything that we would want to get done in the city currently. Um, but so the next one is economic development. Uh, so this will be the first time that we'll, we'll have the opportunity uh, to work with our commercial district and actually look at new, uh, potential new uses for some of the vacancies that we have down there. Um, the, the biggest one that comes to mind is the area where the vet hospital used to be, where Blue Pearl was. Um, so now if the, uh, owners wanted to put in a restaurant or something, there, there would be an opportunity for us to provide them with some water to do that. So, so that's what I was thinking about for that. Uh, and then municipal uses, well, so economic development and municipal uses can get a little. We can benefit from that both ways because, uh, we also have economic development opportunities with some of our parcels. We're gonna be talking later about the garden center lease and that, that building down there. Uh, with additional water, that opens up a lot of different opportunities for how we can use, uh, that site. Um, we have unused space down in our public works yard, uh, or, you know, maybe we want to do something down there. Uh, and so this additional water gives us opportunities that we haven't had. So, uh, those are things that we should be thinking about and planning for the future. Uh, municipal uses really is for, if you want to do additional bathrooms in the park, uh, you know, we have a new underpass going in, uh, which is gonna be the gateway to the frog pond. Uh, that's a potential place for additional public restrooms now to service that park area. Uh, so that's what we would use that one acre feet for, uh, for any of the, any of those ideas. Uh, and then single-family home expansion, that could be if somebody wants to add a bathroom. Or, I, Mike, I don't really know exactly how it goes. I haven't done an ADU, so I don't know personally. But I know you all work with property owners if they want to do an ADU on, uh, on upgrading their fixtures in order to free up water credits. And in some cases, maybe giving up a bathroom, right? So that they can get the ADU. So in a case where somebody gave up a bathroom in order to get an ADU, this is an opportunity now maybe to put that bathroom back in the main house with that water. Uh, so that would be a potential, uh, use for that. So we just put a half acre foot for that. Uh, the policy also outlines, you know, that we'll track this, staff will track this. Uh, make sure that we're staying within these allocations. And then if we need to, if we see greater use than we're anticipating in any one of the categories, then we can come back and recommend modifying the distribution. So with that available for questions.
All right. Thank you. I'll start first with council member Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, City Manager Gerton. I think you did a really great job with this. Um, I appreciate how you've allocated the water amongst the different areas. I, I do feel like our ADUs is the greatest need, and so the greatest amount of water should go in that category. Um, I also really appreciate the tracking and reporting that will be done and, uh, keeping the council updated every two years. So, um, yeah, no, it's clean. I, I think this covers, I talked to you about it today. I think this covers any potential water we would, you know, any use we would need for this water. So you've, you've covered it all here. It's allocated. So nice work. Thank you.
All right. Council member Berger.
I, I, I agree with council member Shirley. Uh, this is well laid out, well thought out. Uh, so thank you for this. I do have a couple of questions. Uh, if we found that this isn't quite working out, I don't think we'll find that. Um, is this something that we would be able to change with the vote, the council? And the next question is, um, on the single-family, uh, expansion. Is this, the, the current program is a two-one, you have an opportunity to add a bathroom. Three-one, you have an opportunity to add a bathroom as well. Does this change that at all? Is this gonna take away from our watering, uh, credits that we have here? Or how, how does that work? Because currently, if you have a three-one, for example, like what we have, you can apply for additional, uh, bathroom. How does that play into this?
You want to answer that question, Mike? You probably answer it clearer than I can.
Well, there, there's the second bathroom protocol that's automatic. Is that what you're referring?
That is what I'm referring to. Does this affect that at all? Is this second bathroom protocol take water away from what we've just?
Well, I think now that you're gonna have this new allocation, that a sliver of that would go to cover some of those new additions that you may add, and whether it's a bathroom or guest room or sink or mudroom or whatever. This allocation that you're talking about would go to cover those.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, you might have to help me with chapter ninety-eight. I'm.
There was a resolution passed in, I believe it was two thousand, where if there was only one, uh, bathroom in a single-family home, that you were entitled to another. So I think to council member Berger's point, uh, does that now go away? Those chapter ninety-eight, um, Nolan Boyd at this point, in lieu of, uh, these water credits?
That, that's a rule.
Still be, uh, um, implemented and then?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm guessing that's rule ninety-eight, I would imagine, right? So I, I can research that. I don't personally know all of the rules that we had. But I, all I know is, you know, we're trying to free up water so that you guys can do things in your community that everybody's wanting to do.
Right. And I'm sorry, I put you on the spot by calling you up for this. But, and he, and he's new to the Water Management District, so. He's, he got credit twice today because he's also came from M, M one water. So he got credit twice. Um, but yeah, so the rules that are currently in place will stay in place. This is on top of any of those rules. So if you were already, yeah, if you could already get the extra bathroom, now theoretically potentially, you could get two extra bathrooms.
And, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot either. Would it, would, why, you're, I think we're all embracing you right now. So, and, and we were just going, I just wanted some clarification, just so I understand. I, I'm asked a question. How am I going to answer that? And I think we're all in the same position here.
Yeah. The best answer is go see Karen.
Well, that would be, that would be it.
Well, I think that's, the, the second bathroom, I think there's some communities that have, you know, totally said you're sticking to this and then it's only ADUs you want to add. And so I think this gives you, your jurisdiction a little more flexibility, in my opinion. So I don't know what John says about that.
Yeah. Thank, thank you very, very much.
All right. Anything else? All right. Council member Uli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I don't have any more questions. It was being clarified by John, uh, uh, Mr. Gerton and for, with other, uh, questions. And, uh, I just want to really like, uh, communicate that I would vote, uh, for this, uh, for this policy. Uh, uh, and the, and the reason is, is it really like allows us like to use our scars, um, water resource into some strategic tools, like for our more, like how, more housing options. And then in order to revitalize our economic, uh, uh, aspect here in the city and as well for our public services that we can provide in our parks or in other public, uh, uh, like places. And, uh, I also would like to point out that this really aligns with our general plan and also our housing, uh, element that we drafted like, uh, years ago or even like, yeah, just, uh, two years ago that we've been working. And, uh, and this really creates, uh, clarity and fairness and, and some administrative, uh, order instead of, of people lobbying for, for water. But at least these, uh, buckets that we could see in here that were allocated are very clear and that, that we are putting more value to the ADUs and the next to the, uh, uh, to our businesses and next to our public, uh, services here or, uh, uh, places in our city. And, and I would also like hope that this is not, is not gonna be carved in stone. Uh, that we can also, uh, in, in the future, we can adjust, uh, this allocation because, uh, we never know, uh, in, in a couple of years from now, we would be able to see like some of these buckets are oversubscribed. And then some categories are never even been used. So at least, uh, uh, I, I like some flexibility on that. And, and also, uh, I, I wish that we could also have equity in the implementation of, of this water. Like for example, for ADUs, I hope that the low income and also the middle, uh, income can also be accommodated, not only for those, uh, like high-end remodels. And, and I hope that they're also gonna be given a chance to, to get this water allocation. Yeah. That's, that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Halleck.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you again, Mr. McCullough. Um, you know, just to be present in this discussion, uh, I'm sure this provides, uh, some levity to all of us and, and regionally to, uh, just to feel that there, that there's more water available to us. Um, I agree with all my council members' comments. Um, it's a very good question asked by, uh, council member Berger. Uh, the contractor in me has direct experience in, uh, some of the constraints put forward on the, the chapter ninety-eight and then wanting to add an ADU. It's been, uh, quite a hurdle in the past. And, um, remains to be seen how that'll be navigated, um, probably with the first application accordingly. But, um, I'd also like to thank, of course, our, uh, our staff for their work on, on this document and our planning commission for their first view at this and their recommendation to the city council. Uh, appreciate their findings and. Uh appreciate their findings and conclusions, which I completely agree with. So uh I really want to thank you for your um admission, as it were, that there was really no scientific method. Behind uh how this would be proportionally allocated, but I see it as um, you know, A D U's being consistent. With our, our housing element, our general plan and the direction, the greatest feasibility. Uh I kinda had some question marks. Um again, the contractor in me sees a lot of uh. Single-family home uh improvements rather than the cost of an A D U, which can be pretty substantial. So um. I was kinda citing what I might have felt could have been some imbalances there. To that point, I really appreciate that uh you included some uh discretionary flexibility, you know, for review. As, as these uh, these allocations balance out where needed. I think all, you, you really pinpointed the categories that we, uh, that we should really address. Were um the ones that we should be looking at, but it's good to know that we can, that we can alter this um. With your recommendation and city council approval in the future. And uh uh as council member Shirley mentioned, uh keeping us apprised fairly regularly every couple of years to see where we stand. So that we uh, we stay in good standing. So. That is all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Um I'd like to take it out to the public if there are any public comments regarding this. Okay, seeing none. Uh I'll bring it back and I, I'll also echo a lot of the comments from my fellow council members. Uh thank you to John and the staff. I think the allocations make sense. It meets. Addresses the housing needs that we have and also the economic development, potential economic development needs that we'll have. One of the things that I want to make sure that the public has crystal clear in their mind. If someone comes to city hall and they want to put in an A D U and they don't have the water credits currently available. If this document is approved, that individual now have the credits that they need. Is that correct? Okay. All right. Cause I know we tried it and uh water district came back and said, no, hold on, uh we're not ready for it yet. So I, I want to make sure members of the public understand that if you're in a situation where you're able to build an A D U, but don't have the water, we have the water for you now. The other thing that's fantastic in this is the, the potential economic development implications. That if we have a property with already a meter on it, now we have the water. Uh that allows us a lot of flexibility to potentially do some really good things out there. I also wanna recognize the planning commission for their work on this. Appreciate the city manager bringing it to the, to the planning commission so they could provide their feedback as well. That's always very helpful. So thank you to them. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Move to a crew.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. We'll move on to the next item, which is staff reports. City manager.
Yeah, so um. As you all know, uh the exclusive right to negotiate that we had with City Ventures on the parcel out at Fort Ord. Uh has expired and so we've terminated those negotiations with City Ventures and we're in the process of finalizing that relationship. Um so we still, you know, the, the direction that I have from you all, the consensus is we still want to move forward on development and getting something done. So I just want to let you know that Denise and David Zender and I are working on that and trying to get us to that point. Where we can come back and talk with you all about next steps and what direction uh you want to go. So hopefully next month, we will be bringing a discussion. It, it may just be high level at this point. Uh but coming back and talking with you all about what process you envision going forward. Do we want to do an R F P? But I think we're all clear that we still want to move forward with uh doing something with that parcel out there. So. Uh I just wanted to let you all know, cause it's been a few months since we've talked to you about this. So it's just, we're, we're working on it and we'll bring it back to you next month. That's it.
Well, there's, yeah, lost two A D U's in my last. Because they had already taken, I mean, they had already taken advantage of chapter ninety-eight. They got there's the bathroom. And then, right, even if they went like high efficiency. Take away the washer and dryer. But the water board was like, no, for the county, no, can't do it. They're all saying this. One was Monterey, one was Marina, and they both said, we're expecting allocation. So, yeah. So their proportions are gonna look different.
Okay, we're reconvening after closed session. I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to both items on the closed session agenda tonight, staff provided the council with an update and direction was given, but no reportable action was taken.
Alright, thank you. Our next meeting is Tuesday, December 16th at 6:00 PM. And of note, this meeting is a week early due to the holiday schedule. So with that, we are adjourned.
Have a great holiday, Mr. Mike.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everyone!